You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Thank you, eh?
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Please I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America.
To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Okay, participation rules.
Please welcome to share the knowledge of your experience with. Enter the conference room number now.
Two, begin by stating your name and address. Three, give us your comments, opinions, or questions on the issue being discussed. Four, ensure that everyone has time to speak.
Enter the conference room number now.
And that you can address other items on the agenda. We may limit your individual speaking time.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
To provide new information. Five, be respectful of client, mission, applicant, and your neighbor.
To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Okay, adoption of the agenda. The roll call is good.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Cover, cover. Speaker.
Yes.
Calling.
Yes.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Okay, adoption of agenda.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
I oppose. The agenda has not adopted.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
October twelve, two thousand and twenty.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
All in favor, approval minutes to October twelve.
Center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Okay, public comment.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Remotely with us, have any public comment? If it's to do with either of the cases, we'll probably.
Please enter the conference room number now.
At the time we're doing the case.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's Larry.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
On a particular case, I don't know if he has any other comments or not, but.
He's muted right now.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Email me to comment, to publicly comment on the I two P case.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
We've all reached that conference. Okay, we can hear you now, Larry.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Larry, can you hear us?
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
I don't know why that BS continues to play.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
She's, she's a plate gal.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Oh, shisha. I don't know, technology.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Yeah, sounds like.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
No.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
I was hoping that he had at least come in a little bit better. Larry, can you just give us a little test on.
Conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Yeah, we can hear you, it's just we have a.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Want to get rid of her sweet nothings.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
There's nothing on that.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Given five.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
That's about, I don't have this ask. Hey Larry, if you can hear me?
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Yeah. It's not.
Hey Nathan?
Yes.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Oh, so you can't type in the number, yeah, Canada, direct.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Just gonna chat right back to him and tell him to call my cell. And then we'll, I'll go about.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Well, I can a little bit.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Yeah, I'm caught in my dreams. He would.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
What program is this? It's one that I'm getting really tired of.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Is this at the point of public comment?
Well, general, in public comment in general, yeah.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
This sound, since he's not, it's confusing. It's not a mail.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
I can go super old school. Watch this.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
That's about as old school as the smoke.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Well, good evening, Larry. Okay, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone.
Center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Glitches. So you are, you're on speaker.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
This is general comment right now.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
All right, you can go ahead, it's up to you.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you again, Tom and Nathan for arranging.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
The I two P conditional purchase of the thirty twenty.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Um, I've made a couple of public comments, of course, about the I two P.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
I did want to mention a couple of new things. I think once again.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Seek to expand right here at home, in South Bay and in our township.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Success story for Alpina. They provide hundreds of jobs, but many millions of dollars from paychecks.
Please enter the conference room number now.
Instead of being exported somewhere else. Now, Alpina is poised for growth.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
And the major hospital is mentioned. There are just, there are new parts.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
And more economic development and entrepreneur initiatives are being played.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
South Bay is strongly supported again at this latest.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
South Florida, it can be converted into an economic initiative for all of us.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
To allow I two P to, to purchase this property.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
A win for South Bay and the township, and a win for the community. We should be there to help.
To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks, Tom.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Now you have the hotline.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now. You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Going a little bit out of order, but, um, okay, correspondence. We have the.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Zero three twenty, and I have a letter of.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Letter of, uh. I believe I sent it on to everybody from Adam Paul.
To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Chamber of Commons, and a letter of support. Supporting the, uh.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Okay, we'll get, we will get started on that. Okay, this is, uh.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Zemex Properties LLC requests a special approval use to allow light manufacturing.
Center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Zero US twenty-three, south parcel number zero one one dash zero zero four.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Business B two zone district.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Okay, we need a motion to begin the public hearing.
The conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Chuck supports, all in favor, beginning of public hearing.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Okay. Okay, and I noted correspondence was received from.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Now it's up to you, Bill.
All right. Thank you, it's good to be back.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Kind of a busy slide, but I wanted to start with at least two, you know, orders. There's, there's actually some parcels that are involved.
To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
That the building sits on, which is the one that we are asking for request aid, the special use.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Uh, five acre vacant, well, it's like, it's currently zone R one.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
But I just wanted to emphasize that we're not asking for any sort of change or special use.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Which is, uh, four point seven three acres in total.
You've reached the conference center. To join a conference, please enter the conference room number now.
Trying to do what I could to start, um, add a little bit more to the story that we started a month ago about I two P. And really, it started, it started a year ago, a little over a year and a half ago. When we were trying to seek permission to change zoning and acquire the former Kmart. And what I'd like to do is hopefully you'll begin to see a little bit of a pattern of investment in the community here and growth of new jobs. And what we're trying to accomplish, we're referencing a number of names and phrases that we use internally that may not mean a lot to people outside of our organization. So what I hope to do is give you a little bit more detail about some of those things. Um, so again, I think we really started the community here with the acquisition of the former Kmart property. Uh, we got into that building in November of last year. Uh, we've now helped grow that space. Uh, we've got a little over hundred three people working there now. And as a result of two of the tenants that grew very, very quickly there, we ran out of space, needed more space. That led us to search, uh, one of the facilities that we found at Wood Forest is the former Alpina Mall. And I'm pleased to tell you that we closed that transaction this morning. So as of right now, we've got the keys and we own that building. Uh, so thank you for your support of that thirty days ago. So that transaction is completed as of today. We told you last month that there's a need for probably three or four buildings the size of Alpina Mall to support the growth that we anticipate through the end of twenty-two. This current request that we have in front of you tonight, or what is, we're referring to as a form of residence location, is one of those six properties that we've been actively looking at and engaged in trying to find. Then again, finally, the, uh, the level of investment that I two P is making here in the community and the surrounding area is, uh, you know, really proportional to the available locations that we can find here. And most importantly, the community and its willingness to partner with us and, you know, wanting us up here doing this kind of activity. So the request, again, as was noted, um, we do have a signed purchase agreement with Ron Proll, the current owner of the, uh, what we're referring to as the Proll Services property. The purchase agreement, like I say, is for two parcels, the residentially zoned parcel Wooded Lock and a four, a little over four acres of the building sits on. The purchase agreement is contingent upon receiving the approval for the special use permit so that we could use the facility for various type of purposes. Uh, again, we plan to convert that space immediately upon closing, should we be successful, into a warehouse space and begin using it strictly for storage in the beginning. We have not yet identified a particular tenant for that space from the manufacturing side. Um, because again, there's a lot of, a lot of moving pieces right now in our search for space. And until we, you know, get a little bit closer to finding enough space to take care of all of our needs, we're being careful about making long-term improvements. This space lends itself very nicely for some small manufacturing cells, like manufacturing cells. That's likely the type of tenant that ultimately will be in there. I don't have a particular tenant yet, so we will utilize it for storage until tenants are going to hide. Then, once we know what tenant or tenants will go into that space, we'll come back to you with, you know, engineered, you know, stamped in your drawings and building permits for whatever sort of modifications need to be made within the building to support the kind of wood that will go out there. Uh, again, the purpose, where any tenants will meet those that, uh, advanced emission of the economic generator network. I mentioned that last month when we were here, but didn't spend a lot of time on it. And that's why I thought maybe with a little bit of sense, to spend a little time with each one, because again, it's new terms, it's things that we're using internally that may not mean anything to you yet, uh, you know, in the public. I also have smaller copies of this slide for you, particularly through us. Essentially, what the network is, is a group of citizens and organizations in northeast Michigan. Um, we've got a shared goal of continually improving economic vitality here in northeast Michigan. Uh, we're looking at solving public, uh, product-related problems to a global customer base. We're really looking at what are the things that we can do to grow businesses that are net exporters out of northeast Michigan area. So we're manufacturing product here, selling it to those people outside of this area, and generating new debt economic activity here in northeast Michigan. How do we go about that, or how do we deliver on that mission? Is through what we're referring to as economic generator labs, or laboratories. And there are facilities that are designed to incubate new starting businesses. Businesses that have a great idea, but need some help in how you commercialize that. They have a need for the space to do it in, and they have a need for expertise to help nurture them. I two P is trying to fill that gap by number one, acquiring the space to incubate buildings in. Uh, and number two, they have the ability to deliver the expertise that offer the young business teams. Engineering help, manufacturing help, sales help, distribution help, finance, accounting, et cetera. Bring those sorts of, uh, capabilities to the table that often the new startup company doesn't have a lot of expertise in at the beginning. Uh, so the idea is we can help accelerate their growth trajectory much faster than if they have to do it all alone. So that quite simply is what we're trying to do. There are currently, however, three buildings that are labs. Uh, there is the former Kmart building here in the township. Uh, that's up and running up just over here. A building in one eighty-one North Industrial, that's up the corner of Hamilton, North Industrial. Uh, you might remember it's the former, uh, Oak City pad tracking building. And Devere Industrial was in that building. We acquired that a year ago in summer. And we, we didn't do anything initially because the previous owner rented from us for a period of time. We didn't actually get into that building until November of last year. So we've been in there now a year, and again, that building is at full life. The twenty-three, eighty US twenty-three is the Alpina Mall property. And again, we closed on that transaction this morning. So there's now three labs, two of them up and running at full capacity, one we hope to get up and running at full capacity as soon as possible. And this former Proll building would be the fourth one here that's pending, that we're in front of you with today. It fills a nice gap in a smaller building that will lend itself, I think nicely, to some, some small manufacturing work cells from the back, and there's certainly office space at the front of this building. So it would be a nice fit for this group of laboratories that I two P is able to use to develop this concept of academic generators. So again, I don't want to get off the track or bore you with that, but I thought it might be worthwhile to at least sort of set the stage a little bit as to what we're trying to do while we've been back here the last two months, a year ago. Um, and, and the story's just started, so, you know, I can't tell you when the next time I might be in front of you, but hopefully it won't be again. Um, we went through and tried to do a better job this time of addressing each of the areas that your consultant has noted and said in our report to your group. Um, so we have color coded for you, in each case, uh, we've got setbacks. Again, these are the property lines, you've got, you know, interior, uh, vehicle navigation from two driveways. We've got a square footage of the building, a place on another lot. There are a total of sixty-two parking spaces that are designated within the footprint, both of the commoned dream. There are three loading dock areas that are designated within the property, and I just, you know, they're there today. The property is surrounded by a green barrier, and the property immediately behind us here is the R one property that we're acquiring along with this transaction. Um, grass and, lighting on the building, um, drainage is, is there as it has been. We were told in our pre-application meeting that there are no current zoning violations on the property. It's meeting curtains only today. Um, we don't plan any changes in the building at all at this particular time. So I'm hoping that, you know, we're in full compliance as of closing, and, and we obviously intend to stay there. Again, once we acquire or identify a tenant for the building, and if that tenant requires modification on the inside, in all likelihood it will, because a large part of the space is not heated today, so we're gonna have to put heat in there. Um, you know, before we can actually start working in that space. So we'll be back in front of you again, not in front of the planning commission, but in front of the township with, uh, engineered drawings, uh, that apply for building permits that are kind of work necessary to, uh, to go ahead and, you know, make that space ready for, uh, for work. Currently, if the office space is leased to Hope Shore Alliance, um, that group has been leasing it from Mr. Proll for some time, I'm not sure exactly how long they've been in there. Um, and his intent is to renew that lease, it's up at the end of this month. We have got no objection to that. Um, quite frankly, with the, uh, uptick in COVID, we're in no hurry to bring employees that are based at home back in the office right now. So the least of our, um, current needs is office space. That lease contains a sixty-day notice pause on both sides. So if we find that, you know, when COVID changes, and we want to begin bringing employees back inside, then we've got an opportunity to decide if that office space is something we want now or, you know, continue to lease it to the folks from Hope Shore. They're in there today, I don't see any reason to abandon that space, um, in the near future at least. But we will, our intention is to, um, immediately begin using that space to store goods. Uh, just same story that we told you about needing space to store finished goods that are coming out of the former Kmart facility, um, their packs of rafters there, aluminum brizas, pretty smoothness. The, uh, again, and I think I touched on lighting, um, the section, excuse me, I don't have a camera, so. Consultant had noted that, I believe in a section three thirty that deals with smoke, noise, vibration, et cetera. Um, he told me, sorry, I don't have a. He told me, sorry, I don't have that.
313.
313.
Yeah.
Again, the, the only possible impact that we would have in that at some point in the manufacturing world is that can be noticed. We're not going to have any explosive, flammable materials, we're not going to be causing vibration, we're not going to be emitting odors, smoke, fly ash, anything of that nature. The only things that we would be doing within that building are light manufacturing, as allowed by zoning by the special use permit. Can any of those have an impact? Perhaps noise might be one, depending upon what sorts of work is going on in there. But again, it, the only thing that would generate much noise would be a large press, quite frankly. We've got plenty of large press capability here in North Woodward, or excuse me, on North 23. So I doubt that they're putting any machinery in there. That's going to cause a noise situation that would, you know, potentially impact the neighbors. Certainly none of the others would, noise is one that, they're going to be catch yourself on this. So with that, I guess I would ask, are there any other questions or any areas that you'd like me to address that may fail? And again, we would respectfully request that the township planning commission would approve our request for special use, so we can begin using the property for light manufacturing and warehousing as designated under the orders.
Okay, do we have any, our online watchers, do we have any comments, any further comments? I know we heard Larry's, I see there's Matt is on there, and Paul. I'm assuming if they, did they get your number, Nathan?
I did.
Okay, all right. I'm assuming, so if you have any comments you'd like to add, then just call Nathan's cell phone, and we'll put you on hands-free and...
Paul says no, Matt says no.
Matt says no, Paul says no, okay. Members? We have one person in the audience, do you have any comments?
No.
Sorry, I didn't ask, but I thought you'd raised your hand. Okay, members, questions?
I just want to ask, when you're talking about changes within the building, or, you know, I understand structural changes, but how would you say the possibility of noises and things like that, how would we put that as, basically, you might have to come back?
Well, no, I didn't mean reasons to come back. I was trying to address the interior consultant's. The closest residential house to that facility is on the other side of AUS 23. And so frankly, if you're living across 23 from the building, I would suspect that you're going to have a lot more noise from AUS 23 than that building without a generator. You know, in a light manufacturing environment, you sometimes can have noise, and that's something you've got to be aware of, obviously. So I only wanted to bring that to your attention, and recognize that's a potential.
Well, one of the things I did write down that I thought I could read to say was, when a tenant has found and possible change in their need for the company, because you don't know when they come in there, that's when you might come back to the township, to the building.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
So you're not saying, so we're not saying you're going to change anything other than to accommodate a tenant, and that would go through the building inspector or?
Yeah, yeah, correct, exactly. We would expect that once, once the test is identified, that we will need to make some modifications to the inside of the building, and perhaps to the outside, maybe replace a door, you know, et cetera, or change the height of the door, that sort of thing can certainly be possible. Any of those labels that require a building permit, then we're going to need to, you know, prepare the drawings, apply for the building permit, and work with the township to obtain a building permit to make those changes. We understand, had we known what we were going to put in there at this point, we would have come to you with it today, but we just frankly don't know. And we just want to...
I'm not against this or anything, I'm just saying that usually the special use, we are, we know what you're going to do with it, and then that's attached to the permission of a special use. This is what makes it, I mean, I'm, I had last time, we're going to do it again, probably, but you know, I'm saying, it's like normally, so when you say, when you say something like that, I'm like, okay, wait a minute, because normally, change their name at the time so that we know what's exactly happening.
No, I can appreciate that. The only thing I can tell you is that, you know, we look very closely at, with a special use request as your light manufacturing is defined, or, or would we move it really into applying for a change of something, we go to the dust.
Yeah.
And we looked at it closely, and then we just, we made the decision that there's, we likely would never have a need to heavy your manufacturing and requiring industrial zone. Everything that we would do would be light manufacturing. It would be within your own permissible uses. The only thing that we likely wouldn't do is we don't get involved with foodstuffs. That's allowed under light manufacturing. And so we likely would never do foodstuffs there. But any of the other things that are noted there, we could, in all likelihood, quite frankly, the types of activities that we do, could be machining, welding, powder coating, there's some of them.
Well, actually, correct me if I'm wrong, so, under a special use, what you're saying you're going to do tonight is to keep the building as it is. You're not going to change anything off of it. And that is why, why you're getting a special use. So you actually couldn't do all those other things.
And would be able to do anything that light manufacturing warehousing allows? I think that's what Bill's doing, is listing some of the typical light manufacturing.
Well, I understand that, my understanding, if you have one, is that when you do a special use permit, and you're allowing the light industrial, but the use permit is subject to that building, the way that building exists now.
Well, I think because of the need circumstances, they're, they're going to, they're not going to, so futures are going to change. So what we did with, you know, Pino Mall, is we made the decision contingent that they follow the performance standards and required going orders. And that's where excessive noise came into play. And they were heavy manufacturing, it'd be a zoning violation.
Yeah, you got that concept too, that...
If we put a condition that they shall comply with the performance standards, special use standards, then we have excessive noise beyond what's reasonable. That would be a violation of special use permit.
So we're kind of saying the same thing. So like, if something changed in this, like say you did want it to improve in that building, and that would change any of those different categories that he goes through with the, I don't know how many that were, that you'd have to come back?
Oh, yes, and we understand that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, we understand that. And who knows what the future's going to be? I doubt it.
Right, that's exactly, yeah, I mean, you could, things could change, right? It would get wonderful, but you know, that's...
Yes, we found that there was a, quote unquote, more industrial use that was a perfect natural building, we know we had to come back to the township, I'd say. You know, we found a tenant that was different from what we told you, and we gave your official approval. And we recognized that. It's just that this building became available. We know that it would fit for us, but we don't have a particular tenant today. But in order to acquire a tenant, we have to have at least the light manufacturing definition for us, so that we can do that completely.
Well, it's perfect.
Are you planning on any exterior storage?
No.
None?
Remember, metal, metal building to the side, that's going to all included in this?
Yeah, there is that metal, insulated metal building, that's right, right along with AUS South.
So, it's west, yeah.
Yeah, that's included, and we would utilize that.
Yeah.
But again, in all likelihood, it'd be licensed storage.
Now, the area back there, which shows here, that he was storing his old dilapidated units, and that's R1.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand.
That's R1. That's all removed. Your intention is not to use that for storage?
That is correct. We would, we would not be storing, storing things outdoor.
I'll be working with you on that.
Still with the township.
Yeah, so just, just a couple things. As Mr. Yoplin said, yeah, what's requesting for special use means all of our parameters in conversation initially. It was discussed of maybe the potentials of looking at M2 for heavier, heavier use. But those parameters aren't afforded by the B2 overlay, as special use says, M1 is. So this is a more callable transition, because M2 in all actuality, and then the B2 overlay, that would actually potentially present a spot zone scenario. So, because there is nothing within a direction that would be comparable in terms of partnering in those uses, so. So one more empty building potentially built.
And you have all those charging stations in the back, you can, for the employees that have electric cars, I still...
So Nathan, you said all the parameters, when she said that all the parameters were measured in special use?
Well, yeah, the, yeah, the general requirement. The special use were well defined, the B2 overlay in the 23 south floor, or the special use, we have, he meets, and I do, we meet all the parameters of the request of special use. And if any zoning issues do come up, unfortunately, I'll be the new sheriff in town, so.
I mean, true, we're, our goal is to do it the right way and be a good corporate citizen here. We don't, we don't want the aggravation, you know, we don't want to be looked at as, as a, you know, somebody that's, that's playing loose and fast with their rules. That's why we're here tonight, seeking, seeking the tool to deal with that way.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess we can have a motion to close the, Tim, if I'm not, this is kind of following the procedure from last time, if I'm not...
I'll jump in.
Jump in if you see something you want to correct, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion to close public hearing.
I'll make that work.
Larry. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
John. Okay, all in favor of closing public hearing? Respond, aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, any additional discussion about the case? Anybody have any?
You'll be going through specific standards?
We are going to go through the finding of our, for discussion there.
I would do what you've done in vast cases, Mr. Dool, in his report, again, under the findings of facts in sections A and B, on the first page, he...
That was, that was, I should have showed you the little sheet, my cheat sheet I prepared from the last minutes. The next thing, the next thing, Tim, was the finding of facts. Go ahead.
If, if, if the commission agrees with those facts, why don't we get that into the record and into the minutes through a motion that the commission adopts and approves Mr. Dool's findings of fact laid out in subsections A and B?
Okay, I need a motion, so move. Charlie, Larry, do these, when do we need to vote, when do we need to hide?
This one, I think, is over on the roll call, because of finding of facts.
Okay. It doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt the roll call, anyone?
And, it makes it clear in the minutes, everybody's chairman, it's your...
Okay.
Okay, Tom, Bradall, Jerry?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Rich, yes. So this is where the adoption of the finding of facts and ready to those findings of fact and forth, the following, I don't know, if you have any qualifications or files of fact, it's down this paper there. I personally did not get past finding of facts from Mr. Dool.
You didn't get it?
On my computer, no.
Oh, I thought I sent it to you. Maybe I didn't, I don't know, I tried, I think I tried, I sent it out, but like...
So I mean, if, so I guess you guys have to read that through and decide if that's accurate, then that becomes, is that what we just did, that you accepted that?
Right, right. We're, we're getting his facts into the record.
Okay, so we just attach that to...
That becomes part of the record, right?
The minutes will show that the board is agreed, Rick Dool's report is going to be part of our file.
Okay, got it.
As ever, always one other occasion.
Right, then, then there's, I don't know why this is next on this paper, but it's discussed that finding sections of A, B, and summary of findings, but that seems like a...
Just, that's what we did last, at the last meeting, so I was just kind of, but it doesn't necessarily...
I can kind of relate to her.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
So now you, you've established Mr. Dool's facts, and you need corrections or disagree with any of those. He's done a nice job, as usual, of setting forth the standards that the commission needs to apply in determining whether the special use permit application should be granted. In addition, I'm going to have a few more when we're done going through Mr. Dool's, there's another section, section 602, special end use applicable standards that really overlap with everything we're going to discuss. But in one of the minutes, the show will be addressed though. So Tom, you don't have to go through them verbatim, but we might as well go through them in the order that Mr. Dool has them in his report, starting with section 325 for parking requirements. Really, what you're doing is giving everybody in this commission an opportunity to chime in if there's something they disagree with regarding his opinions on these standards. Now is the time to voice those, appropriate, raise your pointy stand, show that they've been discussed.
Well, wait a minute, because I'm, I'm kind of lost right now with what, I don't have that in front of me.
Here.
Okay, so, do I need to write minutes on this, or is this going to be?
No, I'll work with you again. I'll work with you after we...
So we'll just...
Yeah. It's going to be part of Tom's file, under the planning commission file.
Okay.
Your minutes are going to be a separate one.
If we, if we include this finding of facts in our, in the case, then, yeah, so this covers it, we're not, we're not going to re, won't rewrite it.
So right now, we're just going to voice our opinion on each one, if there isn't change?
Yes.
The findings of fact, we're done.
Yeah.
The board is approved.
Got that.
Yep, so now we're going on to section 325 for the zoning ordinance, the parking requirements. This will want to take time for each member to read what Mr. Dool's finding is on that standard. And now is the time for any commission member to, again, chime in, if you think this is an issue, if you think that applicant, it's not a problem for this applicant, and we move on to the next, and the next, and the next.
And there's what he's shown in 61 spots, but there's got to be 161 spots if you really wanted to check your minutes.
Yep, and so if somebody voiced opposition to that and said, "Bologna, there's not enough parking," our minutes are going to show that. And of course, you look at that and see, okay, there was disagreement on the commission, or there wasn't.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's going to be in this case, but, so now we can quickly say that in the minutes, I'll update when we, with this, that section 325 would be addressed under the commission. Then we move on to section 313, performance standards, and that's what Bill was addressing, anticipating that the commission would address these things, any conditions regarding smoke, dust, dirt, fly ash, drifted and blown material, open storage, layering radioactive materials, fire and explosive hazards, odors, acids, spectacle disturbance, spectacle, magnetic or radio frequency interference, vibration, noise, notification. We already talked about noise, but now is the time for the commission to ask questions or issues related to those standards. Now would be the time to discuss those.
So to Robert's that, is, we don't know, because he hasn't got a tenant. So that would be handled through the building commission then, if he comes in with a new tenant, that has come in, and one of these is a jack, like you say, there's an old, you know, example. Would that, that, you know, how would that reference to these things?
There's various ways they could come up. If, if there was excessive noise, there's going to be some kind of zoning violation that's going to motivate the desk to come in. going to be some kind of zoning violation, it's going to be more than a, that's, and it's either going to be, they're, they're engaging some type of use that they weren't approved for, young light industrial, or warehousing, so, wouldn't be zoned for what they were doing, or if your decision to approve a special land use is conditioned on them continuing to adhere to these standards, which it will be, if the noise is excessive, then they're in violation of their special use permit.
Okay, so really, all of this is going to go through you. Well, yeah, because we don't have a tenant, so.
All right, so the only way that I can, to actually, truthfully, what I really tell you is that, we understand, based on your zoning, your permitted uses, but if we found a tenant that thought outside of, we likely would look first to, existing industrial zone facilities, and say, let's put them in there, because, as opposed to trying to do something, we already have a lot of industrial.
I do not understand what your responsibility would be.
No, no, clearly, we understand that, you know, we need to, you know, put companies in there that are, that are going to, that are going to allow so many, because, you understand that the sole condition is.
I have, I mean, probably, we got to have them anyway.
Okay, so we're good with that? Go ahead, continue, Tim.
Don't let me rush people by, if anyone has something to say before they head into the emergency, that's helpful. Section three one four, stormwater runoff, Mr. Dool's of information with that provided in order to evaluate stormwater facilities, I don't think, I'll be rushing it. Apparently, it's fine now, it's working well, but if somebody comes to the south, is there a potential any kind of an issue or a problem, maybe stormwater is different when things start getting busy.
You know, there is a ditch to the north.
Yeah.
Something, you know, right along the road there. I did inquire of previous owner, if there had ever been a stormwater plan that was done, I am, or that he ever, you know, had acquired from a previous owner, and to our knowledge, never has been one, that's been completed. And again, I guess I would fall back on the fact that they're, you know, we're under the, the understanding of, that the, you know, building meets all curbs, or it's given due, so there's, at this point, I don't know how else to answer other than, you know, we believe in.
I worked there for fifteen years, and we never had any stormwater, the only thing I probably had is a roof leak.
To add a little bit, in reference to the stormwater question, just off of that location I've worked with at Meyer Road, part of our, one of our special assessment districts, they re-engineered that stormwater intake, which runs parallel two twenty-three due north to the primary disbursement channel, which is actually the deep ditch that runs east to west on the north edge of this property, directly to link here on, which, Tim, you're familiar with the ditch, and can swallow both sides of trucks. So, yeah, it is, stormwater is not a concern on that. The only area in our greater township that has stormwater concerns, of which is none of the townships, couple of key, shall I say, is the county board commission, maintains and operates all stormwater discharges, except for the section of twenty-three from the old state police post, running, continuing to the north, past the township line at the courtyard restaurant. That stormwater system is actually retained and operated by the city of.
Okay. Okay, you, Tim.
Section three one nine, outdoor lighting, if anyone has questions or comments on that standard, doesn't seem to be an issue, we're going with that door, he sits here. Section three twenty, fences and wallow, section three twenty-one C, screening, Mr. Dool says, screening, when a non-residential use plus the residential user district screening is required, this is standard, a vegetative buffer strip may be used, the western boundary of the parcel, but residential zoning, therefore, screening is required, there are no fences or walls, the west and south property either screened by wood, green belt. So, in your decision, that may be a condition that you address.
The, there is a green belt there now.
You've got the western boundary.
The western, yeah, the western and the.
Southern.
Southern is, and somewhat to the north even.
Okay, yep, he says the western and south property either screened by wood, green belt, okay.
But the north one, it, it puts the B ten, the B two zone too, so.
Well, the only, the only issue there is that would be, would be a distraction of central parts, would be if down the road, footprint and continued use of this request is met, but then, since they're two individual parcels, if they were to merge and expand, then that green belt would be reduced, especially to the west and to the west, southwest form, where the R one district actually would become closer in proximity, then that would have to be a consideration for allowing any assessing actions to combine parcels. But currently, it's, currently, it's a, it's a moving point, they're, they're holding that property, and it's already been wooded for all of my entire life.
They cleared it up for me, too. Wondering a lot about this property, oh, my neighborhood, section three twenty-one, landscaping and buffering, really overlap what we just talked about. Section three twenty-seven, access management, we should just read through those paragraphs, see if there's anything there, if questions about, I think that the commission are required, I don't think so. Section three thirty, signs, I don't, still don't appear to, that's an issue, if signs are used in the future, they're going to have to comply with the zoning ordinance provisions regarding signs.
I just out of curiosity, is, are all of those being at your local?
You know, I, I honestly can't answer that, I don't know, you'll probably notice that, where's that room, big outside? To my knowledge, there's only two of them, one is the ICP sign of the former Kmart building, and the other one is, is the, I'm the developer sign of Hamilton, no other buildings between sites. I, I can't answer that other than saying, we tend not to do outside.
If you do, if you do want, you can take that Kmart one down.
Yeah.
So landscaping, beautify that building by August, one twenty-one.
Yeah, for all types of landscaping, anytime you want to be bad, keep ready.
Let the minutes reflect to the supervisors.
Please do not allow the master. I will grab checks.
Mr. Dool's pointing out another section of the zoning ordinance applies to your decision, and that's the article five, site plan review and plot plans, and we're going to have some overlap here, but we'll go through these two, site plan review criteria, number one, ingress and egress, whether that's an issue, doesn't seem to be.
No, those are, well, commercial drives, yes.
Yep, circulation, traffic and pedestrian circulation, similar to ingress and egress, doesn't seem to be an issue, utilities and drainage. Adjacent uses, ties into the location of the property, the zoning, discussing adjacent residential, Nathan has talked about the B two. Five, emergency vehicle access, Mr. Dool, someone said, the applicant complies with this requirement. Six, preservation of natural landscape. I think, do the trees, the vegetation that's already existing, screening. Seven, snow storage. Dool does comply with the ordinance, giving us the fact that there's a lot of, a lot of space here, a lot of land, aid landscaping, and it's overlapped with other requirements and observations regarding trees and lawn. Number nine, outside storage, applies with ordinance, remember, somebody here asked about outside storage? Is anything anyone has on that, or any questions?
Well, until they know who's going in there.
So that goes back. Yeah, well, and that, that question has been raised just because of the outside storage utilization at the current ICP location at the former Kmart building, so, things to be considerate of, but I think that, I, we can address that. I believe Mr. Jack wants to, that we will allow outside, we get no questions, thanks, sir.
Okay, so now our minutes will reflect that we've gone through the performance standards, and the site plan review criteria, and next, we're going to have the minutes show that we're going through the section six oh two, special land use approval standards, I go through these two, and they will really overlap, probably every one of them, but we've already talked about, section three oh, six oh two A, adjacent uses, we've already talked about adjacent uses in the site plan criteria, traffic and access, we talked about that, public services, this may be a new one, first tonight, public services, the water supply, sewage disposal systems, show the adequate for the proposed use, use will be adequately served by essential public services and facilities, the person responsible for the establishment of the proposed use, whether it will provide any such service or facility, and free use will not create excessive additional public costs, will not be detrimental to the economic well there of the township. B, natural resources. Standard, looks at whether there will be any potentially negative impact of natural resources in the township, for example, around the water, that. General, last standard, use shall not carry the purpose and intent of this ordinance, that was probably two or three in the course.
Well, and if I may, to the utilities, with our new water ordinance, wanting to get into manufacturing, and this will be something that I'll, I'll work with Zimax and ICP with as, as it falls under manufacturing, with their new water industrial pre-freeman discharge ordinance, an evaluation will be made to make sure that, you know, no overburden is put on the discharge for itself, so, that, that, all those, and, and, all are covered to our water and our industrial pre-freeman ordinance, so, I'll be setting forth hopefully some, some site visits with Jack, or with Bill, or somebody from the Kmart property, and say, well, obviously, this probably isn't a concern as of yet, but those standards will, will be met through another ordinance.
That's it for standards, if any of the commission members have any comments or questions, anything they want reflected in the minutes, now would be the time, what we did with the Alpena Mall property, with the motion we made to accept the dots, Mr. Dool's findings regarding the standards we just discussed.
So we need a motion to adopt the findings of fact to applicable zoning ordinance standards.
I'll make that one.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, because, like, how many motions are we going to do here? Because we've got a motion of taking the finding of facts by Rick Dool, with the following modifications of some of the finding of that, which we didn't do any.
We didn't, you, the, the commission, did a motion to adopt his findings of fact contained in paragraphs A and B, and now we're doing another motion to adopt his findings regarding the standards that were in the course. This will be directly parallel to what we did with the Alpena Mall, so, I'll, I'll have to do this.
And that's, I, that's where I, I went through the minutes of the last meeting, and I took those bullet points out of there, so. So we had two motions, we had one to adopt them, finding of fact of his findings of fact, and the second one was to adopt to approve them, that we.
A separate section of the three, or if he's going through.
Yes.
We did.
Okay, so is this a roll call, or just a?
Somebody's got to do a motion. Not a motion?
I'll, I'll, I did it for the second.
For the first one.
Go on the second one.
Well, no, I didn't, I have a fever, Derry, on the first one.
Yeah.
Okay, so then you're on this one, your motion, and then, Derry, your second?
Yeah, and you can roll on that.
And then you want to roll a call. Okay, Randall, Derry.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Pfeifer.
Yes.
Foley.
Yes.
Rich, yes. Okay. And then the next thing I have down is that a motion is to grant deny or table the special use.
Yes.
It's right, anyone make an motion, if there are any special conditions that you wish to impose the mall, you had some, because of some of the events, for example, the drainage system needed addressing, I haven't heard that tonight, that there are any additional requirements that need to be imposed, you did a broad condition with the mall, that the applicant would comply with zoning ordinance requirements and standards, I don't see any harm in that, so it could be a motion to approve special use application with the condition that the applicant comply with zoning ordinance requirements and standards.
Somebody ready to do that? Someone, Pfeifer, second, okay, Derry. With the conditions of, basically the same conditions as we had on the.
So that the applicant would comply with the zoning ordinance requirements and standards, that's the only condition.
That's fine.
So, that's a roll call.
Yes.
Randall, Derry.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Pfeifer.
Yes.
Foley.
Yes.
Rich, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not a problem, I'll be seeing you around. Yeah, no, like I said, I was just looking at the, the minutes from August twelve and nineteen. I'm, I'm.
I stickered the book.
Yeah, I, I could go in her desk area, I don't know where she has the stamps, and the last time I touched anything in a woman's desk, I'm building her purse.
What you guys are doing is great.
I'll be seeing you around.
Yep.
Yeah, no, like I said, I was just looking at the minutes from August 12th and 19th. I'm, I'm an understanding aspect, but get a, get a plan.
Sign and print.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm just going to go right there. So you're going to retire your.
I retire my.
Still a grand light?
Yep. Yeah, same thought.
So then you sign that one, and that's your copy.
Yeah, exactly. Directly next door to that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, for the tissue.
Thank you. See you next month.
Yeah, have a good evening, Bill.
See you next month, Bill.
Yeah.
What other buildings are you going after?
Okay, second ordinance number 143 of 2020, ordinance to recommend adoption of zoning ordinance amendments to the township board. The amendment modifies the township charter and township of Alpena zoning ordinance as follows. Section 201 amended the definition of accessory dwelling and add the definition of small cell wireless facility. Section 331 allow utility facilities in any district when locating there is necessary to serve the district. Site plan review shall be required, screening may be required. Okay, and I've never, I've never amended a, an ordinance before, so I think.
This doesn't require any lengthy review of standards or anything.
Okay.
Looking at the overall plan and what you guys went through to create this ordinance in the first place, whether this is a wise idea, whether any ordinance, if a commission member has any question.
How did this come up?
So.
Yeah, that's.
Go ahead, Nathan.
So how did this come about? So throughout the entire process of our new zoning ordinance, 142, we kind of forecasted into the futurist, we all know the exercise that ended up. And in that forecasting of what we didn't want to have substations and towers in a residential area, we overlooked something that existed already, are existing at that point in time, ordinance allowed by language, what we're now trying to amend this evening. So what we have here is I2, or geez Louise, ITC, not I2P. That's been a few days for me. But here we are on Long Rapids Road, chucking it familiar. Four Mile Road drops down towards the hydroelectric facility. This is ITC's substation, well, Alpena Power, I bring. Okay, yeah, well, on this, I don't know what year this is, but you're, you're right here, existing, because you had that reference in there. And what they need to do, because I think it's a state federal, is it a FERC substandard of elevations for disaster relief potentials? I don't know. Well, the whole project is, this project as a whole is a reliability project. So what it is, is Alpena Power has requested that we add a new load. And so in order to do that, we need additional substation that can handle the load. And so they'll receive the new load and then distribute it into the transmission system and then ultimately down to businesses and residences. So this is not a comment, I mean, we're doing this throughout the state to prepare for additional infrastructure and development in areas like this, as well as many others across the state where the infrastructure is, is older and adequate. But this entire project is a reliability project driven with Alpena Power. And as supervisor pointed out, the old ordinance allowed it, it wasn't an issue. What happened when the new ordinance was just recently adopted, there were a slight difference in the definition of an essential service, which excluded buildings. And that would eliminate the ability to build substations, substations have control buildings and the like. So in working with the township, we, we recognized that where they thought this would previously be allowed, and it wasn't, the old ordinance, the new ordinance, business inconsistencies, ended up technically precluding it. And, and that's how this amendment request came about to address the ordinance, so that it really complies more with what you see in other jurisdictions and other municipalities where, you know, electric substations alike are, are, are committed essential services and allowed to move forward for infrastructure purposes. So all we really did was tweak, instead of changing the definition in your new ordinance, all we really did was work with the planner and the township through its board representatives to address section 331, which is the section that allows for essential services to be built, and added in specific language regarding utility facilities, which are transformers, controlled open and the likes. It still can be screened, it still has to be setbacks, it still has to go through the process, but this will enable it to be constructed in the process where it wouldn't otherwise be able to be under the way the ordinance is currently drafted.
And then small cell wireless facilities, and it's not just.
Those are just.
Yeah, but we want to include all that stuff too, yeah.
If we're going to, since we spent the time, this was an exercise, like, like it said, when Neil from I2C was the government relations liaison, we started this conversation, you know, we were on that cusp when we started the conversation, and that was mentioned. In our old ordinance, it kind of covered this, but it just kind of got overlooked and we removed electrical substations of the like as an essential function and service, so it just kind of, just slipped through the cracks. So this is, it's shown a light on that. We might as well, and this has gone through Denise Klein, several different iterations, and as, as well as yourself, Chair Hilbert, to allow them this expansion project. And it made the move, this commission, to hear a little bit about ITC. I'm, and I believe that Norman and I are more familiar with ITC, but.
So ITC, again, my name is Steve Esty.
Wait, wait, excuse me, sir. Your name again is what?
Steve Esty, E S T E Y. And I'm Dyke, D Y K E M E, representing ITC. So ITC was formed around 15 years ago. And what happened was, originally you only get two power companies that were, that are really the state, DTE, I mean, the two major power companies, DTE and Consumers. And they handle the hungry arms of electricity. So generation, you know, clean coal, nuclear, now of course, wind and solar. Then the middle section, which is transmission, high voltage transmission, which are big amount of towers. And then, and then the distribution end, which is the small wind poles that go into the homes and provide your electricity and to the businesses. There was a John Van Joel who worked for DTE who recognized that all of, most of the energy within, energy is the broad word, but most of the effort within the energy companies was focused on the front end generation and the back end distribution. And this middle section, transmission, the high voltage transmission was neglected. And, and so the infrastructure was neglected, really, it's, it's been neglected nationally. And in some respects, it's been compared to our federal highways. And so his brand of job was to basically start an independent transmission company that would focus solely on this middle arm, which is transmission, high voltage transmission. So DTE with FERC and NERC approval and the state enacted a specific law to enable it spot off its transmission arm and created international transmission company, which is ITC. And sole focus of ITC is to manage, operate, and provide the high voltage superhighway, if you will, for electricity throughout Alpena State, but for other states. And they've grown, obviously, they started out as DTE's high voltage transmission, then they acquired Consumers, which is MTC, Michigan Electric Transmission Company, and then they've spread it to other states. And the goal originally was to have this concept take off on a national basis, so that our infrastructure nationally would be supported on this transmission arm. And so what, what ITC does is they receive requests from companies like Alpena Power, DTE, Consumers, when those companies want to increase load for their customers, the end users, like you and businesses, they come to ITC and they say, we need to, we need an interconnection request, it's called. And they enter into power purchase agreements with us, which are reviewed and approved through FERC and NERC and an entity called MISO, which is primary information of need. But then we work with them to effectively build the infrastructure for that middle arm that, that, you know, substations and then the high voltage transmission highway, if you will, that will provide that gap section to receive the energy and then ultimately step it down and distribute it to the end users. So that's who ITC is, and they're obviously an important component of the electrical grid throughout the state, given this role that they serve. But this particular project, again, was requested throughout Alpena Power, and ITC is really just doing its federally regulated responsibilities, which is to comply with interconnection request and create the substation and then build the additional infrastructure to get additional load and reliability to the, to the region. So I've been answering any questions, but that's a, that's a primer on the history of ITC.
Well, I understand that. My question is, is that the Four Mile Dam, that's a transformer farmer site that's there now, so you're talking about making that bigger, or you're moving on down the Four Mile Dam road?
They're talking about building, they're talking about building a separate substation here, proximal here, I believe, that will receive lines from, from this substation, but this substation will be, it's completely separate from the Alpena Power facilities. So it's, it's designed to provide additional reliability and handle additional load coming into the system that the current facility can't handle.
And what about transmission lines from that substation? Are you going to?
Yeah, there is, there is a part of the project involves, I mean, that's a separate, a separate part of the project, a part of the project will involve bringing transmission lines into the substation from the existing corridors.
So where is this site going to be fed from? I mean, where is the power going to come to the substation from? Have we got an existing?
Yeah.
All I'm trying to say is, is that there was a lot of bad feeling, just, I live in the area, but I listened to it last time, and when the gas company put their station in, and then the transformer farm went down by the dam kind of thing, the big problem there is the transmission lines. That's where I've had so much input about, and then when we took the high line that was over in the woods on the other side of the river and brought it along Long Rapids Road kind of thing, it was so bad that people with pacemakers could not drive Long Rapids Road from the Four Mile Dam road up past the Seven Mile Dam. And people would call and ask me, do you know what's going? I have no idea what's going on, nobody, I have no idea there's a substation, and as soon as that word gets out, there's going to be a lot of concern. And I understand that we need this, I understand that. But this is just another secret thing out there that nobody knows about, and maybe they shouldn't, I don't know.
Well, no, I know.
There's going to be, there's going to be some kickback, because your, your lines are going to feed on new metal poles that are installed on that line that runs to the north and up across that section, and then the transmission that's along Long Rapids Road now, those poles are probably going to stay there, kind of thing. I'm, I'm just trying to find out what's going on.
I mean, I'm not even sure that the design has gotten that far, but I do know that, you know, this is not a secret. I mean, this is, we can't put in new poles anywhere without getting property rights.
I understand that.
You know, we have to go landowners and, and develop a route, and when the routes are developed, they're developed with the least impact combined. So that's something that we would be addressing at the time that, you know, a route is actually created for end zone lines that need to come into the, into the facility. And I, you know, this is not uncommon, I mean, these are very, these are very routinely constructed throughout the state, frankly, and without them, we jeopardize the ability to get adequate electricity as the region expands and there's a need for additional load.
So what we're doing, we're upgrading the feed and availability of the loads that are, we anticipate in the area.
Right, and reliability, because if the, if the, if a transformer goes down and there's, and there's excessive load on any particular transformer such that goes down, then you lose the upper region. So the reliability projects are important, because they ensure that you're going to have a stable source of power for the businesses and for the homeowners.
You see, and then you tie REA, Prestkilo is tied in there too somewhere, aren't they?
I don't know.
They're not tied into the, I thought on the, yeah. Well, it's interesting, and it's nice when we get this information to know what's going on, because I'm sure when it gets out there, there's going to be a lot of questions.
Well, and this is, the driver really is, this, this is the part of our organization with ITC. Alpena Power is the primary that calls for this, and part of their first standards of that to meet with the hydroelectric facility is overall foundation was part of the reliability. And I think that was really highlighted with the dam failure in southern Michigan. If that dam were to fail, which, let's see, there's that's the only hydroelectric facility that's within our municipality, and it got a failing rate, as did Seven Mile Dam, just upstream, as did Nine Mile, or Ninth Street. So all of our three primary hydroelectric facilities within the greater township area have an immense opportunity for failure inherent. So part of that is the reliability is to run to higher ground, and that's, that's where this new purchase and potential acquisition and partnership with Alpena Power comes into play. And maybe that'd be something I could align with Matt Cameron, who's, I think now he's might even be the vice president of Alpena Power, to give a presentation to this commission, because after he's gone, I'm going to request something of you guys. So maybe that would be a nice conversation to have, to be well versed on. The reality is, it falls under the guise of an essential utility. So we found, we found some, a hiccup in our well thought out ordinance 142. Denise, soon as we saw this, we went through all the proper channels to, to clean up the language that we missed on the first go around. So that was really the primary reason, because, not that there has to be, but it would be a, I believe it would just be a recommendation of making amendment that would then go to the Board of Trustees to actually make an amendment to ordinance 142. We go to the County Planning Commission, or 30 day, or the Board of Trustees, or, so it'll come to you again.
Oh, yeah, I, and this is.
This is the county planning.
Well, and that's the thing, because I get asked questions, and I need to know a little bit of what the hell's going on in this community, a little bit. It helps me to exist day after day. So the thing of it is, is Alpena Power, that's why I asked the question, where's the feed coming from? So certainly.
Yeah, so that I truthfully don't know.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Understanding, but what I would say is that we would be happy to get a Zoom call set up, or whatever you'd like to do, to get the appropriate technical people on the phone and have you address those questions.
You know what, it would be nice if we could get, if we could get this commission together with the county commission, because they're going to have to look at it, and they're going to have some more questions about it, I'm sure. If we could do something together within the next 30 days.
I mean, after this ordinance goes through, we still have to come back to site plan approval, so.
Sure.
You'll have to, you'll, all of that would be fully added at the time that we actually got actual design implants. I mean, right now, what we're looking at, we haven't even acquired the property yet from Alpena Power, I mean, what we're looking at right now is just the fact that in order to move forward, there's this discrepancy that occurred, and I don't think it was intentional. And we're just trying to get that piece of, just now, and then later, I mean, there will probably be many presentations in terms of that, like site plan, the project as a whole, to the township and the community.
Well, I see the need for this, there's no question about that. My concern is what's going on, what's going to happen, because the, you know, we're turning that area into a, into an electric grid field, if you, if you would, I mean, those big poles. I mean, those big poles and, you know, I think somehow, you know, there was nothing that could be done about when they decided to take the line across the river out along Long Rapids Road and played games with the, with the right of ways through that property that, that was now sold for building lots. But I think things could, as long as we look at the enhancement of the area and the community rather than just slam bang and putting up a, and then put up another 50 metal poles. That's my concern because that's the, that's the communities in that area out there is concerned. Because that was serious. I mean, we, when we had people medically that couldn't drive that road with pacemakers in, there was a problem. And there was a lot of folks at that time went to the commission and went to the, to the Atomic Energy Commission and made complaints and stuff, but nothing ever got done about it. And the people just then to go from, from, say, Corner Depot, if you will, had to go all the way around up through Castro to get on out through, and maybe some of you folks didn't know about that, but it was a real serious situation. So just a thought.
And I can't speak part and parcel, but I know that in the past three years, Alpina Power has anticipated this. And they've already rebuilt their primary transmission lines from the 32 corridor down Lake Wadia to the general vein of consolidation and transmission, if you will. So I think a lot of the improvements on the Alpina Power side far have been made. But that's, as like I said, tonight is the language to allow a necessary essential function to improve itself by federal standards. So we're trying to be a good local community partner. Because the reality is, there's, there's powers that feed this to precede anything that we could really do. And that's why I T C has been thus far an amazing partner. This, they're trying to do everything extremely transparent.
Designed to win win, I think the community will be happy. So where do we go now, Ken?
Motion to recommend adoption of this zoning ordinance amendment to the township.
Make a motion to recommend.
I'll make that motion.
All second.
It's got to be Neil and I T C to buy that property and have an act.
Okay, I'm ready, roll call please.
Gary?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Been a lot of building up in that area too.
And.
While I needed to.
Yeah, but they're talking about 32 transmission. There's a home on the side.
It can have some force.
Yeah, and you know, that should have never happened.
I'm kind of surprised because I didn't answer with shield. You didn't tell me. But she didn't.
The tree, I don't know what the background like.
Because you can't write, Chuck can't write, John can't write.
And I'm the chair on that, so I can't do it.
Thing over here too, there are trees now that are starting to do coal and.
I'll do that.
The radiation, the radiation.
I know. But you're very, very sure of it.
Pardon?
Everyone.
It's not very good.
It's very much better than anyone else here.
That's correct.
That's what you're telling.
Yeah.
And I.
But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be strong enough to affect me too much.
Well, it was, they shut it down and then complained, they were telling, Jack Tucker, good friend, he damn near died. Just down past my foot. Pacemaker closed up. Then he was taken to the radio. And he couldn't breathe it.
Well, I didn't go down there, I just kind of. With a month. I was kind of working, but I forgot. I couldn't believe that that car is here. I don't know, I think I'm weird. Well, there's that. We had some of those things, but I had to make that up. But just in my record.
Where are you based at?
I don't, yeah. I'm always excited, you know? Yeah. I'm my.
I'm so. I have. I'm a club and song before.
Thank you very much.
Um, so the other thing I have is a request. One, and I will fill some time because by the legal standards and bylaw of this commission, you will have to pick a month in which you meet twice. COVID put us behind. By statute, you have to meet six times. So pick which month you want to meet twice. I would say probably let's do two meetings in December, of which outside of your normally scheduled December meeting that you will, with business or otherwise, I will be giving business. And that business, Chair Hilberg, is going over FEMA flood plane mapping. The rate of work is there in a preliminary stage. So between Chair Hilberg and I, we can break your flood plane knowledge.
Did you go to the meeting on Tuesday?
I've gone to everyone.
I've got my.
And that's a very good question, since, you know, we heard on both of the webinars that the county is supposed to be driving this and there was zero attendance by a single county official.
No, we're working on it at the equalization department.
Okay. But nobody's officially attended any of the primary functions. That's a little disturbing.
And I went last year, and I went, I went last year, but this year I've been.
Well, we're now, what we're now working towards in our handout that I had Lynn present is going to be going into the public and open house segments of this that will be starting seventh, eighth and tenth. So I implore you all to take one of these. And whether or not, what we can do is meet on one of these dates already set and go through one of the open houses. Because I will get you links to where you can see all of the, all the data points and all the reference points for the online mapping. I have hard copies in my office. This is a five year rotation. And here we go. Because we're looking as we go through this open house and comment session, the adoption of, well, eternal title of all this, of a new elevation standard. Will we set precedents by an ordinance that we either opt in to adopt as a municipality? So I'll leave it to you. But that will be, as I said, this commission will have to be, pick a month to meet twice. And December really kind of may work if everybody's available. As long as you have a form, we will meet the meeting standard set by the bylaws. So I guess I'll just let you pick what it works. Obviously, there's three dates where we can actually overlay some of those discussions. And in the meantime, I'll make sure that Lynn for you the email with all the embedded links to the mapping. Because it's easier to utilize it virtually than it is with the 42 printouts. And I can grab them and lay them all, I'll fill this room, but their mapping is better. So it really talks about the zones, what new baseline elevations are, how to look and operate under the guidance of the new ordinance. So if we don't get that, we have an option, opt in, opt out. If we opt out, high water event happens, we are what is D S O L. We opt in and then we have mechanisms for emergency funding. So I'll leave it to you guys to get with Chairman Hilber to, and I'll help facilitate a good informational water elevation meeting.
Five to seven, so we have to have our meeting at five?
I would say, yeah. I mean, I don't know what you're, I mean, I'm not trying to say you have to. It's just nice because there's already three dates set to where you can pick one of them. And in the meantime, are all three of them safe?
Oh, we don't have to necessarily meet here then?
Yes, you actually do.
We do.
Yeah, we got it.
We have to have a forum. And what I can do is we can, you can always be here.
So we don't have, like, the school board has, we have a, we can, we can have a forum, Zoom forum.
Well.
But we can't here.
And well, you still have to have, that's, it's a tricky thing with the Supreme Court overruling Gretchen's initial executive orders. Only the potential that has been brought to MTA are still saying, if the last I saw, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Golden, is that you can utilize electronic format, although you have to have a forum present in a facility. So as long as we have, and what, we have a seven panel body here. Well, as long as we have four in attendance, everybody else can attend virtually. So I mean, if you want to play straws, I'm sorry for the cases, but I need you guys to meet twice in December. Or it just helps with this discussion. It couldn't be another month, but this is, we're on now a FEMA timeline. And it would probably behoove this commission to be afforded the ability to really start chewing on.
Well, we have to meet twice in, we have to, two more times in 2020, correct? Okay. Okay, fourteenth would be our.
Your normal schedule.
Normal meeting, so.
So with business or not, that's going to be on the docket. And I think the three dates that go with these open houses and these discussions, these forums are prior. So now as long as four people, I can get everything set up where everybody can participate. And if any other members that aren't available by forum, still can do it remotely. I'll work with you guys, I just have to have a forum so we meet on our bylaws of attendance. So that being said.
Okay, seventh, eighth or tenth. What days are? Seventh is, seventh is Monday, eighth is Tuesday, tenth is Thursday.
I could probably. Yeah, I got a measure of buildings.
Probably do what?
All three.
All three, okay.